Welcome, everyone. I call the September 19th City Council meeting to order. And as a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Councilmember Ray has an excused absence this evening. And the first item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you'd like to stand and join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next items on our agenda this evening are some special business items. I'll be doing three proclamations and I will move over to the speaker's podium to do those. And I will be inviting people up from the audience here tonight to join me. So first special business is ID 1151, IT Professionals Day proclamation. And I'd like to invite Chief Information Officer Gus Tijana, Senior Network Analyst Andrew Griffin and Tim Schaefer and any other IT staff that are here to come to the lectern to receive the proclamation. Somebody's going to take a picture too, right? Autumn. Welcome, gentlemen. Whereas National Information Technology Professionals Day is celebrated on the third Tuesday of every September to recognize the technical experts that ensure our computer and communication systems operate smoothly and effectively. And whereas technology continues to evolve and IT professionals help navigate these changes to provide efficient, inclusive, and communicative service to the employees and residents of the city of Issaquah. And whereas behind every technology stands, often silently and invisibly, IT professionals, technicians, analysts, developers, architects, engineers, administrators, managers, and directors who have been content to work behind the scenes to enable innovation and productivity. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic is a great example of Issaquah's IT team acting with foresight, preparation, and expediency, allowing staff to resume remote service to the public with limited disruption. And whereas the city of Issaquah now wishes to show appreciation for its IT professionals, I therefore, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do recognize September 21st, 2022 to be Information Technology Professionals Day. Hi, Gus.
Thank you, Mayor Polly and members of council. I'm joined tonight with two key members of our IT team. Tim Schaefer, who's been with the city for 20 years and he's led the IT team in many endeavors. And Andrew Griffin, who's been with the team for four years and is our champion on emerging technology and modernization. Soon after COVID-19 pandemic hit, many of our staff were able to quickly pivot to communicating from home, thanks to the amazing IT team. Our group is dedicated in continuously modernizing Issaquah's systems, networks, to enable our staff to maintain high level of service for our community. Thank you for recognizing the IT department and declaring September 21st, 2022, IT Professionals Day.
Thank you, Gus.
Thank you.
And Autumn, can we do a picture? You guys were absolutely stunning during COVID, by the way. They were just stunning. Thanks for spending time with us, Nick. Next up is ID 1261, the Fish aqua proclamation. And I'd like to invite Nathan Bosler, the Chair of the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, to the lectern to receive the proclamation with anyone on your team, including amphibians? Does fish count as an amphibian? No, including fish. There we go, my biology's terrible. Hi, Nathan, how are you?
I'm terrific.
How about your hair? You got a big team tonight.
It's official.
It's official. Whereas salmon have long held a special place in the heart of our community. And whereas salmon are such a part of our heritage, they adorn the logo of our city. And whereas each fall, the salmon return to our creeks and lakes, the first salmon have arrived this year at the downtown hatchery. And whereas salmon have supported countless generations of residents and indigenous peoples. And whereas their lure has driven schools of visitors to our town to learn more about our beloved salmon. And the popularity of salmon has created an identity for Issaquah, which in turn has tilted the scales of commerce in our favor. And whereas the instinctive nature to return home to spawn has instilled a strong sense of community and family and has earned us family circles accolades for one of the best towns for families in America. And whereas the soothing sound of water bubbling over smooth rocks in quaint Issaquah Creek has added to the charm that caused Sunset Magazine to recognize Issaquah as one of the best burbs in America. And whereas Salmon Days has its own infamous mascot, Sammy the Salmon, who is rising to the official occasion by welcoming visitors to join us in Live in the Stream in celebration of our festival's 53rd year on Saturday, October 1st and Sunday, October 2nd. And whereas salmon are the primary reason why our internationally award-winning Salmon Days Festival is a seafarers sanctioned event and voted Best Washington Festival for 2022 by 425 Magazine and Travel Channel. Now therefore I, Mayor Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby declare, in honor of Issaquah Salmon Days Festival, the first weekend of October each year, our salmon-friendly city shall be known as Fish aqua. Make sure to introduce your team.
Well, that was a wonderful proclamation. Thank you, Mayor and council for having us here this evening. We really appreciate it. As you all know, this is our 53rd Salmon Days. It's a big deal. Salmon Days is brought to you by the Issaquah Chamber of Commerce and would be held October 1st and 2nd, as you heard the mayor say. The chamber is super proud of this event. I mean, being named as the number one event, outdoor festival by 425 is pretty incredible. And I love the Fish aqua name, that's pretty terrific. I not only run a business here in Issaquah, as you all know, I also live in Issaquah and I try to convince all my family and friends to move here because it is the most terrific place, I believe. That's why I've stayed here for so long. The festival does celebrate the annual return of our salmon. So be sure to go peek out at the creek because you definitely see those little guys coming in and some of those big guys. So it's very exciting, especially for all the kids and families. This event is very great for a number of reasons. It brings families together, gives us all something to do. You know, it's kind of one of those things, we all know it's going to be beautiful one day and rain the next, but that's what we've gotten used to in this beautiful tradition. We actually have large crowds, as you all know, over 100,000 people before COVID. So we're hoping for a big return, which is exciting. Providing over 30 local not-for-profits an opportunity to build awareness and fundraise for their organizations. So that's a great opportunity for these guys. I want to just list through a few of the great highlights we have for this year, starting with the Kiwanis Barbecue. You all know, great food, great BBQ, good time. Walk-in Parade, which includes awesome marching bands, which is terrific to see live music again. We'll have cheer, dance, youth organizations. Fun to see all the kiddos out and excited, we'll cheer them on. And then local not-for-profits, as I mentioned. Our main stage is actually going to feature an awesome lineup of great bands, including a tribute to Alan White, which I'm specifically excited about. Live music is awesome, especially this tribute, it's a very special one. And that's going to be on Saturday afternoon. Over 300 arts and crafts, 300 arts and crafts vendors will be there along with 40 food vendors. I wish I could visit all the food vendors. I tell you, this is what a lot of people come for, including myself, for many other things. So we encourage all you guys to become attendees. Go stop by the hatchery, see all the exciting stuff there. I mean, obviously, that's like the main reason for this event. See little fishes coming into Issaquah and witness the homecoming of our beloved salmon. So see you all, October 1st and 2nd. Again, thank you. We really appreciate this opportunity to come on to Issaquah Channel 21 and present to the council. And thank you for having us this evening. It's good to see you all in person again.
In person. And this is for you.
Nice.
Any more, pick one more picture.
Yeah, we got a good group photo. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Naveen, do you want to come up and join me for this next proclamation? So ID 1262 is a Recovery Month proclamation. And Naveen Shetty with the King County Department of Community and Human Services, Behavioral Health and Recovery Division is with me at the lectern here tonight to receive the proclamation. Welcome.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and wellness. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has had and continues to have a profound effect on mental health and substance use, with increasing numbers of people experiencing anxiety, depression, and loneliness. And whereas an estimated 575,000 people in county are affected by these conditions. And whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles for individuals, families, and the entire communities. And whereas connection and community are critical components of recovery in our local area and across the nation. And whereas we must encourage relatives, friends, and neighbors of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to recognize the signs of a problem and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas prevention of mental health and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and recovery is possible. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as Recovery Month in the city of Issaquah. Thank you very much for coming, Naveen. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, sure.
Fantastic.
I'll keep this short and sweet since you've read the proclamation and it has all the great information about it. But recovery is possible, and I think that's the most important part of here. And when individuals need assistance, they need to seek out their community, their social supports, to receive the services that they do need. And Issaquah has been a great partner in that, and so we appreciate all the efforts. Again, Recovery Month for September. I encourage all those to reach out to services. One in five individuals in America will experience a mental health condition at some point in their life. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Naveen.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Lots of proclamations when we come off of break. So Audience Comments is next on the agenda. And this is the time when members of the public may address the council in person or virtually. And so those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star 3. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device, but one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. And City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Mayor, no one has signed up in advance to make comments, but I do see one virtual hand raised.
So for those making comments this evening, please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone for virtual attendees or step up to the lectern for in-person attendees. State your name and address and relationship to the city and speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments written and verbal are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes these comments seriously and we thank you for taking the time to address us this evening. City Clerk, can you identify the first person who's signed up to speak? Or the first person who has raised their hand?
Yes, Ann Fletcher. Ann, I'll make you a panelist now, so you should have the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, okay. I'm Ann Fletcher, I'm a resident of an Old Town neighborhood and a member of the People for Climate Action Group. And I'm happy to address the council after a while has gone by. Just a reminder, as we start this budget presentation by the mayor, we're starting this process this fall. And just a reminder to think about climate change. I've heard some members of the council say it's our biggest existential threat and needs to be addressed in a very short timeframe. And so I'd like you to keep that in mind. How are we marshaling our resources and our budget to do this? It's a very challenging project. And so I please ask you, as you're working on the budget this fall, that you look through the lens of climate change along with all the other lenses that I know you have to look through. There are new ways of thinking, new changes that are happening. We have to be so flexible, different than before. And we have to ongoing assess things and pivot sometimes mid-year or when the funds come in from the federal government, which we know are coming, and working with the state. We have to work differently, we have to work regionally if we're going to make this very heavy lift happen. It's a huge thing. Our Sustainability Department is a big help in supporting that and also sustainability in the other departments. How is that going to look? It's huge, but it's very exciting. And I truly believe we can do it. And People for Climate Action is here to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann. City Clerk, do we have anyone else raising their hand?
No.
Okay. And we do not have anyone in the room that has indicated desire to speak as well. So thank you for coming. We heard from People for Climate Action today asking the council to be thoughtful of the climate challenges that we face as they consider their budget this fall. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And I want to hand it over to Council President Walsh to talk about any email comments that might have come into the council on tonight's agenda topics.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did receive two emails with comments. On the consent agenda for AB 8426, the 2023 Arch Budget and Work Program, we received one comment asking for clarification related to the potential TOD project support, and that being in Arch's work program, as well as another comment with opposition to Arch's involvement in the condominium construction lobbying, which is part of their work plan for the city of Issaquah. For AB 8386, the 2023 School Impact Fee Update, we received one comment with concern about the school's proposed decreased impact fees for developers. And then on our regular agenda, AB 8351, the Newport Way Maple to Sunset Improvements Corridor Concept, we received comments with concerns about how that is moving forward, what the next steps are for feedback loop for the public and other comments about community engagement. And that concludes.
Thank you, Council President. We'll move to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The LTAC Committee met this afternoon. We went over the potential budget recommendation that will be coming back to council for budget discussions during the fall. Also, many of you had the opportunity to go to the Salmon on Sunset event on Saturday. It was a great event put on by our salmon hatchery. And LTAC helped contribute about $8,000 to that project as part of their funding for initiatives that helped tourism in town. So we're seeing our LTAC dollars at work. Cascade Water Alliance, the Finance Committee will meet on 9/20. And the Full Board meets on the 28th of September. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. On September 8th, I attended the Eastside Human Services Forum Board Meeting. The forum continues to build its organizational infrastructure. In addition, we have two highlights. On Wednesday, October 5th, from 11:30 to 12:45, the forum will be hosting a remote lunch and learn on permanent supportive housing. You can register for the event on the Eastside Human Services Forum website. And I'll also be sending all of you a link to that website. The speakers are Leo Flor from King County, Dennis Sills from Plymouth Housing, David Bowling from Congregations for the Homeless, and Lindsay Masters from Arch. So it should be an excellent discussion. And then the second item is the forum leadership has entered into a conversation with our longtime friends at Alliance for Eastside Agencies to see how we can better align our services, reduce duplication, and provide an even stronger voice for human services on the east side. So if you have any questions about this ongoing conversation, please let me know and I'd be glad to give you more details. The Regional Transit Committee is holding its next meeting this Wednesday, September 21st, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. The topics are rapid ride prioritization criteria. And the second topic is innovative and flexible programs, which relates to conversations that we're having right now. And so I will be in attendance and we will be listening and commenting with great enthusiasm. So that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one committee report and several, three regional reports. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met on September 7th. We had two items. The first item was ID 0976, Storm and Surface Water Master Plan. We were presented with a list of 10 priority projects to be incorporated in the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan. So these were the 10 capital improvement plan projects that staff recommended and the committee members at that meeting unanimously supported that list. We also recommended that when this item returns to council, there be more information about existing stormwater projects in the works to complement the list of new projects. And we also wanted more information about how the capital improvements list gets updated and how the budgeting process gets updated once we've, as a full council, deliberated on and potentially adopted that new list of projects. So that information will be coming back when the agenda bill comes back to council. And that is currently scheduled for November of this year. We also had ID 1157, which is Title 18 Land Use Code. And this was a number of follow-up items on multiple sections of code from prior discussions. This continues our long series of land use code conversations. The committee agreed with staff's recommendations for items that staff did have a recommendation on. One item that we had robust discussion about was around parking standards. The way the parking information was presented, we were wanting more clarity around whether parking standards were increasing the amount of required parking or neutral or decreasing them because the way the parking standard was calculated, it was a bit hard to parse. And so we will get more information on that. Hopefully, with that information, we can have a better sense of the direction that the parking standard is going in this round. And then we also had a discussion about council's previous conversations that parking will be a big part of the follow-up items once Title 18, this Title 18 update is completed, that we will continue conversations about parking and about how to achieve the walkability and the pedestrian-friendly environment that we all want and how to align our parking standards with that vision, especially for, as we grow. So that was our items for that last meeting. The next meeting of the PVE Planning, Development, and Environment Committee will be this Thursday, September 22nd. We have one item, which is ID 1249, which is also Title 18 Land Use Code and will be on administration and procedures. Then I have a couple of regional reports. The King Conservation District Advisory Committee met on September 13th. We were discussing King Conservation District's mission, vision, and strategic planning. And this is a part, this is part of an ongoing discussion about how King Conservation District's work can become more equitable and more inclusive. The next meeting of the King Conservation District Advisory Group will be on October 11th and we will continue this discussion. Then the Regional Water Quality Committee met on September 7th. We had a discussion about how the committee can identify and select topics for our review, so about internal governance of the committee. And we also had a briefing on a recent overflow at a pump station in Seattle and discussed conditions that lead to failures so we could understand as a committee and also so that we could understand what is being done to prevent such future incidents. The October, the October meeting of the Regional Water Quality Committee is canceled. And then the Wire 8 Salmon Recovery Council met on September 15th. And there were multiple decisions that were made. We approved the Management Committee's recommendation for the 2023 Budget and Work Plan, which includes an 8.8% increase in the inter-local agreement cost share. As we know, costs are going up for everything, including for salmon recovery projects. And so this increase largely is reflective of that. And we also approved the 2023 federal and state legislative priorities, which include a recommendation to add language about supporting investment that aligns diversity, equity, and inclusion funding with salmon recovery priorities. And I was not present at this meeting. I was present at the Management Committee meeting in which we made the recommendations on the budget. But Alan Quinn, the senior stormwater engineer, was there to represent the city of Issaquah at this meeting. And the next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council will be November 17th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. As I mentioned earlier, Councilmember Ray has an excused absence, so we'll go to Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council's Services, Safety, and Parks Committee will be meeting tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. We only have one thing on the agenda, it's ID 1235 Vehicle Trespass Ordinance. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board will next meet Thursday, October 6th, from 10 till noon. And the agenda, the draft agenda includes conversations about housing and equity planning guidance. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met last week and Council Deputy President Hall has that report. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you very much. Two quick reports. First, for Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors, we last met Thursday, September 8th. And on our agenda was a quick review of the agency's new strategic plan, as I referenced a few weeks ago. I also just want to quickly thank the administration for working with us to help schedule a time for Deputy Chief Ben Lane, incoming Fire Chief Ben Lane, to come to the council at our next council meeting on Monday, October 3rd, to just do a quick walkthrough of the strategic plan so we're all on the same page. And our next board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 13th, where I expect we'll adopt our biennial budget. So we will, in the meantime, Councilmembers Ray and Martz and myself with the administration will look through that to make sure there's not anything that we need to come back and get feedback from the council on. And if there is, we'll bring it up during good of the order at the next council meeting. And then for the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, last met on Wednesday, September 14th. A couple of things I wanted to highlight from that. First and foremost, there is an SCA, Sound Cities Association Networking Event, on October 5th at 6:00 PM at the Renton Pavilion Event Center. And they've asked us to make sure to highlight that with you all. In case you're interested in going, it sounds like it's going to be a big one. The Executive Director search is moving along quite nicely with Deanna's departure and move to Association of Washington Cities. And we've been told that the SCA Board is excited about their candidate. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that, Mayor Polly. SCA spots for regional boards and committees are coming up soon. You should see an email come from SCA very soon. And the nominations deadline will be November 10th. So start thinking about which appointments you'd like to apply for, whether it's a re-up or a new appointment. This will help you, you know, get back to SCA on time, but also it'll help you prepare for a discussion next week, next week, that Council President Walsh and I are planning on leading about thinking strategically about our city's board and committee assignments for council. So that's exciting. We also had a preliminary discussion on the SCA legislative agenda. And there is now a call for cities to share their legislative agendas as soon as possible with, with the SCA PIC so they can begin to kind of crunch on that. PIC will have time to refine the SCA legislative agenda on October 12th, November 9th, and December 14th. So we've got a little bit of time before the SCA Board finally takes it up. And we're looking pretty closely at the Association of Washington Cities legislative agenda, which highlights behavioral health, the Blake decision and response to the Blake decision, public safety vehicular pursuits, infrastructure funding, and housing affordability and availability. So those were kind of the big ones that were brought up in AWC and that we kind of had a conversation on at PIC this time. But they're eager to hear what our priorities are. So I believe we have a few more weeks until we have our conversations. So something to keep in mind. We also received a quick briefing. Oh, is my time up?
[laughing]
Just kidding.
We're doing that now?
We also received a quick briefing on the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission, which is established by the state legislature in response to growing concern about capacity for our state's airports. I wouldn't bring this up, but interestingly, the commission is studying a site in King County in the Enham Claw area. You may have already heard about this. That seems to be outside the scope of the commission's authority that was in it. So there were a lot of southeast King County cities at our meeting, and they've written a letter to the commission asking the commission to remove that site from consideration. There's a lot of interesting information from that, and I'm not going to go over all of it, but if you're interested in learning more about it, please let me know. And our next virtual committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 12th, at 7:00 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. I just have a really quick, short report. I attended the Business Leadership Forum last Thursday. The mayor's going to give a summary as part of her mayor's report, so I'm going to provide a bunch of details that are relevant to council in our discussion at good of the order later tonight. And then the Affordable Housing Committee that I'm on, the next meeting is Thursday, September 29th, at 1:00 PM for a virtual meeting, and the agenda has not yet been released. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. There is an executive session scheduled for this evening to discuss security of computer and telecommunications networks per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1, per N2, and pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1, per NI. These items are expected to take a total of 45 minutes, and no action is anticipated in open session. I'm going to add one more proclamation that we made this week, but it was, we did not have anybody here to receive it. I issued a proclamation declaring September 25th, October 1st, 2022, to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Week in the city of Issaquah. One in 285 children would be diagnosed with cancer before their 20th birthday. This issue impacts many in our community and in our employee. I invite residents to join me in spreading awareness about this important cause, and you can learn more about this issue and ways to support children online at the American Childhood Cancer Organization. The Newport Pedestrian Bridge and Raised Intersection Project began construction today, September 19th. This project will include the construction of a new pedestrian bridge across Anti-Aircraft Creek and a raised intersection and pedestrian crossing where the Cougar-Pesapee Trailhead meets Newport Way. The pedestrian crossing will include rectangular rapid flashing beacons, or RRFBs. Pedestrian access across Anti-Aircraft Creek is currently limited to the northwest of the trailhead. A pedestrian bridge and intersection improvements will be placed to complete pedestrian connection from and to the trailhead. Project duration is expected to last four to five months, and we estimate completion in February of 2023. It's been another exceptional year at the Issaquah Farmers Market. This year, the market averaged 65 to 72 vendors per week and 3,400 shoppers per week. The current vendor sales total is over $1.1 million. So come and support the vendors at the last farmers market of the season on Saturday, September 24th, from 9 to 2:00 PM. A big thank you to the staff and the vendors for all their hard work this year and dedication. Human Services Commission Grant Review. Last week, I met with the Human Services Commissioners who recently finalized the grant review process for the 2023-2024 Human Services Grants. As a reminder, for those who are not familiar with city boards and commissions, this is one of the 14 volunteer boards and commissions who serve Issaquah and advise the mayor and city council. The Human Services Grant Review Process started in May with the onboarding of new commissioners and an equity in grant-making training that Human Services Commissioners from five eastside jurisdictions jointly participated in. Issaquah, Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, and Semamish. Commissioners reviewed 81 applications and used, for the first time, the recently adopted Human Services Strategic Plan to guide the review and recommendation process. Focused areas included physical and behavioral health, housing continuum, culture and language access, and community resources. The review process was smooth, the review tools worked very well, and communication and collaboration with staff, staff were very helpful. The commissioners will continue to work with staff to enhance future processes to include more information on other regional funding sources to better inform the impact of our grants and make, that our grants make in the community. The Human Services Commission's recommendations are included in tonight's budget proposal to city council, and I would like to thank the commissioners for their hard work, dedication, and commitment. This is a huge undertaking, so well done. As Council President mentioned, last week, she and I both met with approximately 30 business leaders at the new REI Satellite Headquarters. The forum was an opportunity to hear challenges and successes from businesses in Issaquah. We heard from leaders that are concerned about attracting employees to Issaquah due to the high cost of living here, or long commutes to travel here. Businesses continue to face challenges in permitting and would like the process to be more streamlined and provide opportunities for earlier feedback on city regulations, programs, and policies. Leaders are encouraged by the communication from the administration and will recruit talent to Issaquah by advertising the amenities and sense of community. The meeting was very productive and a great opportunity for us to connect, and I look forward to continued collaboration with the business community. Big thank you to REI for hosting us. And it was the first time somebody from Siemens had ever met up in a business forum with us. So that, you know, that's a global company. That was very fun. Upcoming Issaquah community events, the Issaquah Alps Trail Hikes. Join Issaquah Alps Trails Club as they celebrate the Fall Equinox with a hike on Squawk Mountain on Thursday, September 22nd at 5:00 PM. Bring your headlight, headlamps for a hike to Debbie's View, the best view on Squawk Mountain, and more information is available at issaquahalps.org. State Park is having a Free Pass Day on September 24th for National Public Lands Day. Join your friends, join the friends of Lake Semamish for several kids' events on September 24th, including Eagle and Salmon Spotting and the Ranger Reads Events. More information is available on the city's website. And last, as you already heard, Salmon Days is just around the corner, so mark your calendar for the most fantastic weekend of the year, October 1st and 2nd. Council members who are interested in volunteering at the city's booth should email Thomas Rush from our communications group to sign up for a two-hour slot. And that concludes the mayor's report. The next item this evening is the consent calendar, and it was distributed to council in advance. So if it is authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Do I have someone willing to make a motion? Council President?
Thank you. I move to accept the consent calendar as written. Thank you.
Deputy Council President?
Second.
Is there any questions? So it has been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. Hearing no comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to, six to zero. So we're now going to move into the regular business portion of our meeting, and we'll start with AB 8463, a small item called the 2023, 2023, 2024 Budget. And I will be doing a presentation for that. And if, I have a choice. I can address the council from here, or I can address the council for the podium. What feels best for you? It's way more comfortable up here. Thanks. So, community members and our dedicated city council, I am pleased to present my 2023-2024 Proposed Budget, the first biennial budget for the city of Issaquah. After more than two years of effects resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, the city is experiencing strong financial performance, with many revenue sources matching or exceeding pre-pandemic highs. The city is seeing strong performances in the retail, business, and construction sectors, as well as with real estate sales. However, we are conscious that although there is a strong short-term economic success, there are still headwinds in the future, including the uncertainty of inflation, interest rates, and limited revenue sources for funding city initiatives. There is also the challenge of attracting and retaining staff in a competitive employment environment. My proposed budget makes significant investments in three key priority areas, including public safety, human services and housing, infrastructure investment with a focus on mobility. My 2023-24 Proposed Budget totals $168.15 million for year 2023, and $174.2 million for 2024, respectively, across all funds, with $63 million in capital investments over the two-year period. I'd like to thank the Capital Planning Task Force, as well as our city council members, for their time and effort over the past year to identify capital funding priorities, as well as prioritizing the spending of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. This budget continues my focus on a safe and healthy community. The budget commits funding for police for two new patrol officers, a record specialist, a new corrections officer, and a permanent police systems and GIS analyst. An investment in body cameras for all officers by 2024 is also included in the budget. The city has been successful in the hiring of six new officers in 2022, including three corrections officers, seven dispatch employees, and two support employees. This budget also makes investments in human services, focusing on implementation of the Human Services Strategic Plan, to identify strategies to better serve the needs of the community. It also includes a pilot program with Motel 6 for temporary emergency housing for those in need. The capital funding in the 2023-2024 Budget includes $27.3 million for infrastructure projects and $4.7 million for parks and trails. Major initiatives such as Newport Way improvements, Gilman Bridge rehabilitation, and funding for a transportation concurrency plan, and funding for a limited-term transportation coordinator are essential pieces of the budget. For many years now, Issaquah has developed plans to address key initiatives, including mobility, parks, and climate action. Following the city council's retreats in January and July this year, there was clear support to leverage our current strong financial position and focus now on implementation. This proposed budget does just that. I have no doubt that the 2023-24 Biennial Budget will ensure that significant progress is made on city initiatives, including public safety, human services, housing, and infrastructure investments focusing on mobility projects that will benefit the city for years to come. I look forward to working with our dedicated city council, our hard-working staff, and our passionate community members to finalize and adopt the budget this fall. I would like to recognize the hard work of staff to put together this budget, especially Robert Hamud, our chief financial officer, Suzie Mansell, our budget manager, and Dale Markey-Crimp, our management analyst. Staff will return on September 28th to council for a budget overview presentation. We will also be holding two public hearings on October 3rd and November 7th, and deliberations will take place throughout October and November, with an adoption anticipated for November 7th. Thank you very much. The quiz on the budget starts in 10 minutes, so get your pens and paper out. It's quite the document. The next item under our regular business this evening is AB 8221, and this is amendments to Title 13 and 16 with regard to Stormwater Manual and Flood Plane Code. The question before the council this evening is to adopt the ordinance, and I'd like to invite Evan Brumfield, Environmental and Regulatory Program Administrator, to make a presentation. I am assuming he's one of our remote visitors tonight. Welcome, Evan. Oh, yeah, sorry. Have we got Evan on?
Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks. Welcome.
It always takes a minute to figure it out. So, yes, good evening, and thanks for having me back here tonight to hopefully wrap up our process on the city's Stormwater and Flood Plane Code amendments. My name is Evan Brumfield, and I'm an environmental and regulatory program administrator here for the city. I'm coming back to council tonight to seek adoption on the proposed code amendments. That made our mandatory requirements, and also areas that we've identified to go above and beyond these mandatory requirements to help accommodate Issaquah for climate change. We have these updates, and they're required to maintain compliance with our CRS and MPS permit. So the Community Rating System, or CRS, program, is a voluntary incentive program that recognizes and encourages, sorry, community floodplain management practices that exceed the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program, or the NFIP. Over 1,500 communities in the nation participate. City currently holds a Class 5 rating out of 10, amongst the highest in King County, which gives our residents and businesses a 25% rate discount on their flood insurance premiums. The National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or MPDS, is a federal requirement under the Clean Water Act, regulates and reduces stormwater and wastewater discharges from the city's stormwater system to the maximum extent practicable to protect water quality and waters of the state. So these updates will occur in IMC 1636, our Areas of Special Floodhazard. The driver for that is our CRS user manual. Then our stormwater updates will occur in IMC 16 and 13 for our MPS permit. And this permit requires Issaquah to update our stormwater design manual, and in Issaquah, our stormwater design manual is broken, made up of two separate documents. One being Ecology Stormwater Design Manual, and the other being our Issaquah Denim to the Ecology Manual. And what this addendum does is it allows us to be more locally prescriptive of the manual to fit Issaquah better. Outside of these mandatory updates, we've also identified areas where we can go above and beyond these basic requirements. So taking a step back, we kicked off this whole process in October of 2021. Staff met with consultants to identify these areas for the mandatory updates, as well as places that we can go above and beyond these mandatory updates to help accommodate for climate change. We then went to the Joint Environmental Board and Planning Policy Commission meeting on March 9th to present on these areas. We could go above and beyond the mandatory updates to better accommodate for climate change, including future floodplain protections and critical drainage review. We then presented these options based on the feedback, feedback we received from the Environmental Board and PPC meeting to a council study session on April 12th. And after that study session, we sent out draft codes for internal review based on recommendations that we received from both council and the Environmental Board and the Planning Policy Commission. On May 12th, we presented to the Environmental Board about the stormwater design manual updates, and then we took that information, and on June 7th, staff presented the final draft stormwater and floodplain code amendments, along with the 2022 Stormwater Design Manual Addendum at the Planning, Development, and Environmental Committee meeting. The committee unanimously recommended adoption of the proposed amendments at city council. So after the June 7th PDE meeting, we realized, oh, sorry, we finalized the SEPA checklist and received a determination of nonsignificance on July 11th. The SEPA process allowed public comments through August 1st, and the city didn't receive any public comments, which brings us here tonight, where we are seeking adoption of the proposed amendments. The floodplain code updates. Updates are going to occur in 1636, our Areas of Special Floodhazard. They're going to, the driver for them is two separate things. One is our CRS Class 8 preboard requirement, and the other is our future floodplain protection for climate change. So the following slides will go over each of these. First, I wanted to talk about floodplains in Issaquah. Issaquah is unique to our neighbors in that we have an active floodplain that is dissecting our city. Not only is this active floodplain dissecting Issaquah, but our urban core and residential is within this floodplain as well. So every year, the King County Flood Control District mails out a flood-ready brochure, helping residents prepare for floods. This Flood Control District highlights seven rivers and creeks where flooding is expected frequently. The seven water bodies in King County are Skycomish, Tolts River, Snoqualmie River, Cedar River, Green River, White River, and Issaquah Creek. So Issaquah, more so than our neighbors, given our floodplain's location, has to be thoughtful in our planning for future flooding to mitigate future impacts. For the CRS Class 8 preboard, this requirement states that the community in Issaquah must adopt and enforce at least a one-foot freeboard requirement, including machinery and equipment for all residential buildings triggered by our flood ordinance, where base flood elevations have been determined, the flood insurance rate map, or the firm, or the flood insurance study. So, as you can see in the picture on this slide, the house farthest to the right here, the freeboard, which is the height above the 100-year floodplain or the base flood elevation in Issaquah, would be the area between that DFE line and the top of the foundation. This is something that Issaquah already has been This is something that Isqwa already has been requiring. However, our code did not clearly state that we were implementing this requirement. Clearly state this requirement, the city is updating our flood code to meet this standard by doing three separate things. One is adding in a definition for equipment. Two, updating IMC 1636-130 specific standards to include appropriate clarifying language. And three, updating our flood protection elevation definition to include equipment servicing these activities. A future floodplain protection. Floodplain protection has been implemented by the city and directed by FEMA through Ecology to establish minimum standards within the 100-year floodplain for the community to participate in the flood insurance program, so that, you know, we have to meet these minimum requirements so our residents can even get federal flood insurance. So, these minimum standards do have shortcomings that are worth considering when applied in Isqwa, specifically when accommodating for climate change and future peak flows in Isqwa's creeks and streams. An analysis done by UW and Fish and Wildlife has found a general relationship between future peak flows in Isqwa's stream systems and the difference between the 100 and 500-year flood stage. Increasing the flood protection standard to the 500-year flood stage or the BFE plus two level will address the projected future 100-year flows within the existing 100-year floodplain footprint. This graphic is what the administration is proposing for certain facilities when the 500-year flood level is known by FEMA. So, each of these icons represents a development type. As you can see here, we have residential, e-facilities, hospitals, attached garages. Right now, the gray bar in the middle represents our current flood protection level, which is base flood elevation plus one. What we are proposing is that the facilities and activities that are listed in that top blue bar to be elevated to the BFE plus two level to reduce potential impacts from future high flows. The plus-two feet broken down into one foot for that freeboard requirement by CRS and the NFIP, and that other foot would be for climate change. The green area, the green bar at the bottom are areas that tend to be more resilient to flooding impacts and don't necessarily trigger our flood ordinance. So, you'll also notice that the roads and travel section is crossed out in this graphic. And that came from our June 7th PDE meeting where staff were asked by the committee to identify what major roads would be included in the BFE plus-two flood protection level. After the meeting, we did some research, and it was decided to remove all the roads, including major and minor arterials, from the increased flood standard. Decision was made due to further research indicating that currently the city or FEMA doesn't have a flood standard for roads, and that we would be then creating a new flood standard. The intention of these increased flood standards was not to create new standards, and that is not what we have been proposing. The flood standards for roads will be tabled and evaluated during the next floodplain code update, which most likely will occur in another five years. This graphic is what the administration is proposing for facilities when the 500-year flood level is not known by FEMA. What does it mean when a flood level is not known? It's essentially that there is just less certainty about what that base flood elevation is, and maybe a little more protection or uncertainty should be considered. Again, each of these icons represents a development type. That bottom bar represents our current flood protection level, a base flood elevation plus one. Sorry, it's a little kind of blurry. The top bar is what we're recommending increasing our flood standard to, that BFE plus two, for the same rationale that we used in the previous slide. The bottom bars, again, areas that are determined to be more resilient to flooding and aren't necessarily called out in our flood protection level. Sorry, that's a little bit lower here. One thing to note is the green icons are for areas in the Zone AO, which represent flood depths. So, these are areas that don't necessarily have a base flood elevation, but we know that flooding pools there. So, back, you know, in the day along Gilman where we would have certain bathtub situations, that didn't necessarily have a base flood elevation, but we knew that, okay, it floods there at two feet. Well, these facilities that are located in that area would have to be built to two feet above that flood depth or three feet above the highest ground surface, whichever is For the stormwater design manual and code updates. So, these updates will occur in Title 13 and 16, and they include, one, the adoption of our 2019 Department of Ecology Stormwater Management Manual of Western Washington, and the 2022 Stormwater Design Manual Addendum. Again, those top two things combined to be our stormwater design manual, and also the inclusion of the offsite analysis, which we presented to you as critical drains review. And so, yeah, we just kind of rebranded it. We, well, we didn't rebrand it. We found in the manual that there's an optional offsite analysis that we chose to, that met our needs for the critical drains review. So, instead of creating a brand-new process and new lingo, like we don't need any more of, we have an existing offsite analysis that will fit our needs, and the source control program for existing development. So, an additional code update occurred also following that June 7th PDE meeting, and the city attorney provided additional minor amendments to clean up and clarify the chapters impacted by this code update in our stormwater codes. Most significantly, changes were made to address legal issues in our existing code in Section 1328-130 Administration related to inspections of stormwater facilities. These changes will allow our inspections of these private facilities to be more predictable to the property owner. The proposed ordinance incorporates these changes. The city will update from our 2014 Ecology Manual to the most current 2019 Ecology Manual. This manual provides guidance on the measures necessary to control the quantity and quality of stormwater. Isqwa uses this manual to set stormwater requirements for new development and redevelopment projects. Land developers and development engineers use this manual to design permanent stormwater control plans, create construction stormwater pollution prevention plans, and determine stormwater infrastructure. Businesses use this manual to help design their stormwater pollution prevention plans. So, the 2019 Ecology Manual update will continue to help Isqwa comply with our permits. And the 2019 manual changes include increased alignment with permitting and performance standards, clarifications, inclusions of additional source control best management practices, or BMPs, additional modeling requirements, among other considerations. The City of Isqwa Stormwater Design Manual, 2022 Addendum. As I stated before, this addendum allows us, Isqwa, to be a little more locally prescriptive of what the 2019 Ecology Manual is and to make it fit Isqwa better. While most of the Ecology Manual is applicable to the City of Isqwa, several significant differences are contained in the 2022 Stormwater Design Manual Addendum, and through the city requirements for development permitting, including, one, the Central Isqwa Area Alternative Flow Control Standard. This alternative flow control standard modifies the flow control standard in the Valley Floor area of downtown Isqwa. In these sub-basins, the predeveloped condition can be assumed to be the existing site conditions instead of forested. Or two, Central Isqwa Area Seasonally Saturated Soil Assumption. In 2011, the city conducted a technical analysis in coordination with the Department of Ecology into the predevelopment hydrology of this area, and specifically where seasonally saturated soils conditions can be documented near the surface. Number three, humidity discharge from a project site shall not exceed 100 NTUs. And so, when I'm talking about humidity, that means kind of the cloudiness of the water, and NTUs are the measurement of the cloudiness of water. The humidity standard of 100 NTUs is the discharge notification level for all projects in the city at all times up to the 10-year storm. Larger projects that require their own construction stormwater permit through Ecology have a discharge notification level of 250 NTUs. Isqwa has decided, as in previous updates, to be more proactive and restrictive on stormwater discharging from a construction site, and these larger projects are required to meet our more restrictive standard. Number four, Community Planning Development, or CPD, conducts our stormwater review. Number five, the inclusion of the offsite analysis, which will be an assessment of the consequences and risks of stormwater system failure. Number six, adoption of certain King County Surface Water Design Manual sections, which is an equivalent manual to the Ecology Manual, specifically Chapter 4, which will be Conveyance System Analysis and Design, and the figures in Chapter 3, which are the isopluvio maps, which help determine certain year storm frequencies and the precipitation level over 24 hours that trigger those events. So, our proposal here tonight is to recommend the adoption of CRS Class 8 freeboard requirements, future floodplain protection, the 2019 Department of Ecology Stormwater Design, or Management Manual of Western Washington, the Stormwater Design Manual Addendum, the offsite analysis, and the source control program for existing development. So, in it, sorry, administration recommends adoption of the ordinance, adopting amendments to the Isqwa Municipal Code, Chapters 1328, Stormwater Management Policy, Chapter 1626, Clearing Grading and Stormwater Management, and Chapter 1636, Areas of Special Flood Hazard Regarding Provisions to Support Compliance with the Department of Ecology's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or MPDS, Phase II Stormwater Permit, and the Community Rating System, CRS, Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA Floodplain Program. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Evan. Are you sure you're not going to pile anything else onto that massive body of work? Wow. I'm going to go to the Chair, Chair Hunt, right now to give any feedback she'd like to provide from the PDE committee about this recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met and discussed this on June 7th, and one of the subsequent changes which Evan did speak to was the removal of roads, including major and minor arterials, from the increased flood standard. This was something that we did have a discussion about, trying to understand how a flood standard would be implemented and how that would be implemented if the buildings on either side of the road were at a different flood standard, and just the complexity there. So, that is one change that came about through those conversations and is reflected here and does reflect, I think, addressing that concern and those questions that the committee had. One other question that the committee had, which is addressed in our materials, is we had questions about what happens when floodproofing fails, and there is a very comprehensive answer in our packet about the city's role in that and the, how it works, how the damage is assessed and how the city staffs are involved in that process. So, that addresses those major questions that we had. We also had a discussion on onsite septic systems, and I believe that this was touched on in the committee, in the committee of the whole meeting as well, when the city council saw this item before the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee. And so, that is one thing that I did have a question about, to the follow-up to that conversation. But overall, the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee did recommend this, recommends these changes, and was unanimous in our recommendation of moving forward.
Thank you. Did you have a question this evening, Isqwa, too?
I do have a question, but.
You can go first, and anybody else that has a question, please raise your mic.
Okay, great. So, my question is, I saw on Page 5 of the Agenda Bill, there's a mention of that discussion that we had on onsite septic systems. We did have a discussion about concern about having septic systems in the floodplain, being potentially built in the floodplain, and what our regulatory options were for addressing that and for addressing concerns. They can have backflow issues with flooding and also potentially water quality issues if they fail, and as we discussed in that meeting, I don't think we have good data to understand the scope of any potential issues with that. So, I wondered if we could get an update on when we will be able to discuss this, because that is mentioned and was part of our discussion, but there's no information, at least in this packet, about next steps for discussions on regulating onsite septic systems.
Thanks. Evan, can, I know that a couple of years ago, the council did adopt a more frequent, an ordinance that required more frequent testing. Have we got data that can be shared with the council as part of that discussion?
I'm not familiar with the past discussions on that, but I can speak to an update on the onsite septic.
Okay.
So, we do have our sewer master plan that is, will be coming to, back to the council on, I believe, its third quarter, or it might have been pushed now to the fourth quarter just from staffing changes. But, yeah, we are going to be identifying areas in our onsite septic, areas of our onsite septic inspection that, to potentially be not removed, but have a tiered approach of priority areas to get those onsite septics hooked up to sewer. So, that's, I think that's the same answer that we gave you before. There's not much more, but it's being discussed, and it'll be coming back to you very shortly.
Thank you. Thank you, Evan. I want to make sure to, that conversation has come up during capital projects before, where a specific neighborhood is aware, but we have many neighborhoods that still have some septic or more than some septic. And so, I think we need to make sure that we have a communications plan that they're able to participate in these conversations. Any other questions? Council President.
Thank you. Evan, I know this was discussed in our PDE meeting, but I'm wondering if you can just talk a little bit about what, what type of development would trigger the necessity, if this is adopted, of going to that BFE plus-two-feet idea? Talk about the difference between new development and redevelopment of a property and what, which would have to comply.
So, this isn't, you know, as soon as, if this gets adopted, it's not, you know, tomorrow everyone is going to be required to elevate their homes. It's going to be as they come in, in the normal process, as it is currently, where they come in for a permit, if they're operating, if they're in the floodplain, and they trigger our floodplain ordinance, then that's where it will kick in of this, this new standard. So, new construction, that would, that would be triggering our flood ordinance. Existing homes or, I guess, buildings that have a substantial improvement, which is 50% of their, the project is 50% of what their assessed value is. If they stay below 50%, then they would not have to meet our flood ordinance, but if they go above that 50% threshold, then that would trigger our new flood ordinance. It also, if they're doing an addition, then that addition would be subject to the new standard, but the home, the existing home or site, or, sorry, building would not be required to be elevated as well. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yep. I just wanted to make sure to highlight that here. Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? And if not, would someone care to make a motion? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance number?
2989.
Adopting amendments to the Isqwa Municipal Code, Chapter 13.28, Stormwater Management Policy, Chapter 16.26, Clearing Grading and Stormwater Management, and Chapter 16.36, Areas of Special Flood Hazard Regarding Provisions to Support Compliance with the Department of Ecology's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, Phase II Stormwater Permit, and Community Rating System, CRS, Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA Floodplain Program.
Council President?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Council President, oh, Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Thank you for all of the information that was presented to committee and to council previously and to council tonight. I will be supporting this. One thing I wanted to point out is that One thing I wanted to point out is that Isqwa currently has one of the highest ratings, which allows resident, for this floodplain discounts for premiums. So, city currently holds a Class V rating among the highest in King County in the CRS program, and this allows a 25% rate discount. And if we don't take action tonight, then we would not be, we would, our residents would not be able to have that rate discount for their flood insurance. So, that's a strong reason to adopt this tonight. And then also, this, this action accounts for, and plans for climate change, and I think that that is prudent, especially, as was stated, we do have a floodplain that goes right through our city and right through our urban areas. And so, I think, very prudent to account for what we expect will be increased flooding as a result of climate change. So, I will be supportive, and wanted to say thank you again for the information.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank the PDE Committee for doing the detail to review this, and I'm just really digging committees and having these kinds of meaty subjects, not always have to be at full council, but knowing and trusting that the committee's done a thorough review. Thanks.
This one is meaty. Council President?
Thank you. It is indeed meaty, as was the staff support on this. I just really appreciate, Evan, how well you took us through in the PDE Committee, a very intense, you know, welcome to this project, and here's all that we've been doing, here's the impacts and the understanding. I came away feeling like I actually understood it, and I appreciate that very much. You know, it took a while to get through the concept. We talked to businesses who had feedback about, you know, ADA concerns. If you're increasing the height requirement for housing, do, does that cause a problem with ramps and people being able to get into that housing? You were able to address that very well. I very much appreciate the removal of the roads. That was one of my main concerns in going into this, was the city was going to be responsible for having a two-foot increase on all of our arterial roads, and that just caused me expensive heart palpitations. And then, I just also wanted to say, I appreciate the design manual changes that gave some very specific adjustments in that addendum to Isqwa, specifically the turbidity discharge standards, and looking at the employee parking lots, and requiring them to come up to the same standards that we require for other parking lots. So, really great work. I absolutely support this, and I just wanted to say another thank you for all of this really incredible work.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2989, adopting amendments to the Isqwa Municipal Code, Chapter 13.28, Stormwater Management Policy, Chapter 16.26, Clearing Grading and Stormwater Management, and Chapter 16.36, Areas of Special Flood Hazard Regarding Provisions to Support Compliance with the Department of Ecology's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, Phase Two Stormwater Permit, and Community Rating System, CRS, the Federal Emergency Management Agency Floodplain Program. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I have to fix that. Those opposed? That carries unanimously, 6-0. Evan, I want to thank your team. I've participated and listened to a lot of updates over the years, but you really, your team has demonstrated an amazing ability to not just do the required update, but to look at Isqwa specifically, and really tighten up things that I think are going to be huge improvements in the way we manage flooding and floodwaters. So, thank you so much for that. It's a great, it was a really great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our next item, unless, the council has been here since 6:30, and I'm just doing a check-in. We have one more regular business item in executive session. Would you like a five-minute break now, or after the next item? It's kind of a meaty item. That's why I'm giving you an option. Keep going? Keep going. So, the next item of business this evening is AB 8351, Newport Way, Maple to Sunset Improvements, the corridor concept. And I'd like to invite Transportation Engineering Manager John Mortenson, and Senior Transportation Engineer Shua Wang to make a presentation. And welcome, Shua. This is your first time in council chambers, I believe. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm John Mortenson, Transportation Engineering Manager. With me is Shua Wang, and we're together doing a joint presentation for the Newport Way, Maple to Sunset project, which, we're going to divide the presentation based on when she took over from the, for the project. So, I'll talk about the parts that I oversaw, and she'll talk about the parts that she oversaw, as well as the next directions, and close it out. The outline for tonight's presentation, I'm going to talk about the purpose of the item, the, it says direction needed, but it's actually a recommendation that we'll talk about, as well as the policy goals and impacts, which refer to the Climate Action Plan and Mobility Master Plan. Then go a little bit into the background for the project, and how we got to where we are, then really start diving into the final concept for the project at that point. Afterwards, we'll talk about the public involvement process, and the feedback that we received from the community, as well as timing and next steps. The purpose of this item is to seek council approval for the corridor design concept for Newport Way between Maple and Sunset. And the recommendation that we have in front of the council tonight is to approve the concept as recommended for Newport Way between Maple and Sunset. And the details of the concept are in the summary of the final design concept, which is Exhibit A for the Agenda Bill. The project goals and policy impacts that we want to talk about, when we came up with the project concept, we really went first to the Mobility Master Plan, and then to the Isqwa Climate Action Plan, and looked at how those projects would guide, or those documents would guide this project. And the things that we're looking at are improving mobility within Isqwa, preparing for future growth, better connecting Isqwa with the region, promoting environmentally sustainable mobility, and reducing community greenhouse gas emissions. And for more details on this, if you happen to see, there was a staff report that really went into this, that went to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. This project, as I've mentioned a couple of times already, begins at Maple, which is near Target and Trader Joe's, and it heads southeast to Sunset. It's also a part of the future Mountains to Sound Greenway Corridor, as identified in the Park Strategic Plan and the Green Necklace Planning Document. That route is shown in purple on the map, going all the way from the western side of the city, where it will intersect with Bellevue, along Newport Way, along Tibbetts Valley Park, and then along Newport until it gets to Holly, where then the trail will head east. This project is in yellow, and you can see the three roundabouts and the project location, as well as a few other key community connections. Little bit of background on this project, and the history goes back way before 2009, but we're just, for simplicity, we're going to start at 2009. And the city council asked the administration to do a corridor study for Newport Way between Maple and Sunset, and there's a big community involvement process. And on January 2011, the council adopted a preferred concept for Newport Way. It included non-motorized facilities, three roundabouts at Juniper, Holly, and Dogwood. It included a second southbound lane that went from Maple to just past Holly, as well as facilities for bicycles and pedestrians. Work began on the project after the council adoption, and then in 2012, the city council adopted the Central Isqwa standards, which included defining Newport Way as a parkway. One of the differences, though, between what council had adopted in January 2011, and what was adopted with the Central Isqwa standards, was a center median that, one of the feedback that the administration got while developing the 2011 concept, was do not put in a center median. And then the Central Isqwa Plan, which affects Newport Way from Maple to Holly, so it does not affect this project from Holly all the way to Sunset, but the Central Isqwa Plan put the center median back in. And with the two conflicting, or not, I don't know if conflicting, two different adopted standards, in 2018, when the administration got some grant funding to do the design, we tried our best to try and merge those two concepts together. We came up with a preferred concept at the time. There were two problems with it. One, we had a community involvement meeting, and the community, the same members who told us back in 2010, do not put a center median down the road. They came out and reminded us, because we had put in a center median along the whole way, and they said, no, do not do that. And the other problem that we had with the original, the 2018 concept, was that the total cost of the whole project was $40 million. And we identified about, if I remember right, $26 million, so we had a gap of $14 million to cut. And we began working with the different departments with the city, the Transportation Advisory Board, the Park Board, and eventually the community, to come up with the concept that we're presenting here tonight. And now, I'm going to talk about this preferred concept, and I'm going to mostly skip this slide, because the next slides have the details. We've got four different sections, and they're color-coded. So, this is the blue section. It goes from Maple to Holly. And it, we kept the second southbound lane, that was part of the 2011 concept, eliminated the center median, and as a way to accommodate the bicycle and pedestrian facility, what we did is we took the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trail, and we split it up between the two sides of the road, and separated the bicyclists from the pedestrians. So, you have a separated bicycle lane next to a sidewalk on both sides, and as well as a landscape strip in between.
Councilmember Mertz?
Yeah, so if you have a second southbound lane, do you have to then do two-lane roundabouts? And does that change the footprint of the project?
So, I guess I'll say, since January 2011, the project has had two-lane roundabouts at Juniper and at Holly. And so, it doesn't change the footprint, because that's how it's been, but that is the footprint, is a two-lane roundabout.
Okay. I guess, somehow, having spent many, many, many years with this project, I had forgotten that those two were two-lane roundabouts.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. The next section is the section in red, which goes from Holly to south about 900 feet, which is where the traffic model said that second southbound lane needed to end. And what, it's basically the same thing as Section One, but the sidewalk is on the school side, is now eight feet wide instead of six feet wide. And the reason for that is, we had a joint meeting with the Park Board and the Transportation Advisory Board, and where we presented two different, or actually, three different non-motorized configurations for the project. And one of the concerns was having the sidewalk next to the bike lane, next to the school traffic, the school pedestrians, that there was concern that the bicyclists would be too close to the school kids, and especially because you'd have kids walking home from school, maybe they're grouped together. So, what we did is, in this section, we widened the sidewalk to eight feet wide instead of six feet, in order to mitigate that concern. This third section, the purple section, Section Three, this is where we've dropped off the second southbound lane, but we still have the sidewalk on the school side is eight feet wide, figuring that, at this point, the school kids are still grouped together, where we'd want the extra width for them. And then the final section, which begins just a little bit before Dogwood, or just north of Dogwood, and goes all the way to Sunset, we're back to having six feet wide sidewalks, six feet for the bicycles, and one lane in each direction, plus the planter And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Shua, who's going to talk about the community engagement.
Take a few questions.
Yes.
Deputy Council President and Council President?
Super quick question, because I just realized now I didn't ask this in committee, and so I'm wondering if it was intentional. So, Section Two is the part right in front of the school, and then in Section Two, it goes down to two lanes for then Section Three. I was just wondering if that was intentional, if merging lanes is a form of traffic calming, and it's right in front of the school. So, I'm just wondering if that, it was an intentional design element, or happenstance?
Happenstance. It's, yeah, it was a matter of, in this, doing a lot of traffic modeling, where we looked at it, and we said, well, what happens if we keep the existing merge point, which is just after Maple? And we said, what happens if we did it near Juniper, and every time it said we needed to do it 900 feet south of Holly? And it's so that way the backup wouldn't start backing up intersections behind it.
Council President?
Thank you. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about that area around the school. I'll have a question later about the school, like, engagement, but do, was there ever considered a roundabout, or what the exit strategy is for traffic leaving the school? Because I know, right now, there isn't a proposed roundabout for the school exit, right?
Let me make sure I understand your question, Council President Walsh. So, talking about, I guess, can't ask it again, I want to make sure I answered it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Holly is on the north side of Isqwa Valley Elementary, but the school traffic that does pick up through the lot, I believe comes out on what's called School District Road, at least when I'm looking on the map, which is south of the school. And I don't think there's a roundabout there. Do, how does the traffic modeling and everything work with everybody coming out of the school in between those two roundabouts?
Okay. Great question. I don't have a good answer for that, other than, I know that they did model where the driveways were at for the different things, and that, once we get past the concept stage, then we'll really start looking into those details of making sure that the school traffic works out well with this design. It's my understanding, back when we did the 2011 concept, that the school's preferred alternative was to do the roundabout at Holly. But as we progress with the design, we really need to be mindful of how this will interact with the circulation at the school site.
And then, one more question. Roundabouts aren't great for people safety in general, because people, the cars are focused on where they want to go, they don't have an official stop. Is there a sense of any concern about kids trying to cross at either of those roundabouts in order to get towards school?
Another great question, and I would say that, in terms of concern, 100%. This is, once we get past the concept in, on design, this is, I think, the most fun thing, is designing the pedestrian crossings for the school, because I think it's the most important part of the project. And there are ways to make a pedestrian crossing at a roundabout safe, and there are ways to not do it, and we've learned a lot from what not to do. In fact, we're right now finishing up a project... In fact, we're right now finishing up a project where we're improving the roundabout at Southeast 43rd and East Lakes Mammoth Parkway because we did not do a good enough job of considering pedestrians when we designed that roundabout. There's lots of tools that we have that we're going to look at, whether it's raised crosswalks, pedestrian signals, Dutch roundabouts. And it's the part, as a transportation engineer, I'm the most excited for.
Thank you for mentioning raised sidewalks. I love that as a concept. Okay, thanks.
John, I'm just going to chime in here with a couple of things. If I understood your answer to Council President's question, this is a concept like a sketch. But your data and your design tools that you use may end up throwing in a few more roundabouts or something a little different than what we're looking at today.
I wouldn't say put in more roundabout. Well, I guess if something were to show that the school access needed to be a roundabout, it wouldn't eliminate that. But I would say that generally, this is a, you're correct, a sketch. And that we'll get into the details of the design and make sure that it works for all users, make sure that it meets the vision in the Mobility Master Plan.
And then, you know, we are not in control of school district land. And we know that they are going to be under pressure as Central Issaquah grows as well. So hoping that we have great conversations with the school district in case this site becomes much denser than it currently is right now. And the last point I'd like you to talk about is just what I have heard from some residents is experience with roundabouts, from a driver's point of view, allows you more options. So if you're trying to hit one of those cross streets, Holly or Dogwood, or I can't remember the other one I'm missing, Juniper. But there's a primarily heavily flow in a north or south direction. This actually is very beneficial for those who are trying to move around town versus through town.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Polly. That is a great point. And one of the things that we really wanted for the design of this project is to have improved mobility within Issaquah. And the three intersections where we're proposing roundabouts currently do not meet the signal warrants. So we can't justify putting traffic signals there. And that we want to make it so that way, if someone lives on Juniper, that they can access Newport Way or Dogwood or Holly, that, really promoting mobility within Issaquah is a huge priority.
So before he passes the baton, any more questions for John? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So the cross-sections were very helpful. Could you explain what the bike cross-section looks like for the roundabout? Do the bikes go a different way? Or do they, is that?
That's going to be part of the design. And that we haven't worked out that detail. We wanted to get to this part and then really start looking at the footprint, looking at what we can do, what are best practices. And knowing that this is part of the Mountains to Sound Greenway, that there's going to be a lot of bicycle users. And that as we move the bicycles through the roundabouts, that we need to be very mindful of their experience and their safety and usability.
Okay, so not determined yet what the cross-section would look like of the roundabout for the bike part?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Not seeing any more questions. John, you can toss the baton.
Thanks.
Good evening, councilmembers and Madam Mayors. My name is Shaw. I'm the new transportation engineer for the city. So I'm here to talk about the 2022 community engagement. We have, so in the summer of 2022, the project team did an extensive community engagement event, including update project website, online survey, and a virtual open house. Over 700 people visited the project website since the update. During the three-week survey period, 196 people joined the online survey and 24 people attended the virtual open house. The goal of the public outreach is to not only inform the public about the design concept, but also to gather community input and also build relationships with the community. So here is the slide shows the survey results, how the final design concept meet the needs as a user, meet the needs as a corridor user. So as we can see from the graph, 66% think the overall design is just right to improve connectivity within the community for all users. The blue, the green one shows 74% think the design concept provide a comfortable walking network and experience for pedestrian. 72% think the protected bike lane meet their needs. The last one shows the driver experience, driver improvement, which is slightly lower, which is still 60%. With 25% people think the final design concept does not do enough for drivers. The other 13% think the final design concept does too much for driver, for drivers. The takeaway from the survey is the majority of survey respondents think the project does the right amount to improve connectivity for the, along Newport Way. Also meeting the need for both motorized users and non-motorized users. On July 13, 24 people attend the virtual open house. A project overview was given. And attendees were invited to join the virtual, the breakout sessions to ask specific questions they have related to the project. The main topics, including concern about stormwater capacity, second roundabout merging point, concern about the capacity along the corridor, back and path crossing at the roundabout, and also right-of-way impact to the adjacent property owners. The virtual open house worked as intended to share the final design concept with the community, gather input, build a relationship with the community, and also create awareness of the project timeline. Talking about timing and next step. So we're presenting the concept here to the council tonight. And if council adopt the design concept tonight, the project will move to engineering design in the winter of 2022. And the administration will also continue working on the cost-saving ideas such as retaining wall and underground overhead utilities. So there are three options. Option 1, council approved the final design concept with no additional changes. Option 2, council does not approve the final design concept but continue to find, found the design phase. Option 3, council does not approve the final design concept and stop funding the project. So the administration recommends city council to approve the corridor concept for the Newport, Newport Way, Maple to Sunset improvement project. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Shaw. Council President?
Thank you, Shaw. Was the Issaquah School District invited? Or did they participate in the most recent round of community engagement?
The most recent community engagement was happening this summer. So there's, so we wasn't, so the most of the focus was on the residents along the Newport Way. So we'll be, for our next step, we continue the discussion with the school district.
Okay. Was, do we know when the last time they were engaged on this project? You don't remember, okay. Okay, thanks.
Questions? For Shaw? I'm not seeing any more. I was going to go over to Chair Joe, Committee Chair Joe, and ask if you'd like to provide any additional summary or comments from the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I want to thank the staff for your continued work on this project. It's a project that certainly has a lot of feedback and discussion. One of the items that was perhaps not stated was that this design also went in front of the Transportation Advisory Board and the Park Board when they held a joint meeting to evaluate the design on November 10, 2021. So on top of two boards and commissions looking at this, we had all of the feedback from the different concepts that were covered there in the presentation as well. So a great deal of public comment back and forth. And I'm sure there'll be more as we go forward. I'll go ahead and indicate that Mobility and Infrastructure Committee reviewed this on August 9, 2022. In general, the committee feedback was pretty positive. The committee agrees that this proposed design has merit and should go forward after discussion with the council. It does, it's really a challenge because you've got a, basically a country road. Newport's a country road that had farms on one side and houses on another for quite a while. And now it's, you know, a major arterial in a lot of ways. So we in the city need to figure out what we want to see there for traffic within the city, for our own citizens, as well as still being a functional road for people that want to go through the city. But balancing those two has always been difficult. And I believe this concept is one way to address that. And I look forward to the discussion of this as we go forward. Would any other committee members like to make any comments initially?
Deputy Council President?
Yeah, if it's okay with the other committee members. I took a couple of notes on kind of some comments that we had on next steps that we communicated to staff that weren't necessarily about changes to the design concept proposal, but things to keep in mind moving forward as you move into more concrete designs. So a lot of the things that we heard today, one of them was outreach and engagement with local businesses along Newport Way. So we avoid roundabout mistakes of being able to actually turn out into a lane of traffic comfortably and not creating dangerous situations there. So that was taken as feedback from staff. Same with heavy engagement with the school district, both on crossings along the road, but then also being mindful of roundabouts and how we do that. We also had lots of comments because I had a member of the community come and talk about roundabout safety for quite some time. So we had lots of comments around designing our roundabouts with intention to encourage pedestrian crossings, to ensure that turnoffs are safe as you exit roundabouts, and then also that bike passages are safe. We also recognized that it's not necessarily the role of council to review roundabout designs or even these kinds of designs. But it was brought to council because there was, there was this conflicting design concept, right, from the 2011 and from the Central Issaquah Plan. So that's why it was kind of brought to us. And that was just, anything else that you two could think of? I think that was pretty much our conversation. Yeah, thanks.
That's great, thank you very much. Would anyone care to make a motion or? Okay, questions first.
I'm wondering, can you talk, was there any consideration of the endpoints of this corridor? And whether those, either the start or the end, should be considered as roundabouts? Whether that would improve traffic flow or whether they were necessary as part of that design?
So I'm trying to think back. Because, so the intersections, I don't believe so. I know we did a number of traffic modeling. But, well, for one, the intersection at Maple and Newport, that one is a very heavy or very busy intersection. And so it wouldn't make sense to have that one be a roundabout. And then I don't believe we evaluated the one at Sunset. But I could see some challenges just because roundabouts take up lots of right-of-way. And we've got a park there and, this was creek. And so it's not a good spot for one. So I don't think we really dove into it, but, yeah.
Fantastic. That was just my last question, was understanding the endpoints and whether they were part of this project and evaluation or the other half of the Newport Way.
Thank you. Any other questions? Or Councilmember Joe, you ready for a motion?
I was ready, going to go ahead and make a motion. I move to approve the corridor concept for Newport Way Northwest Maple Street to West Sunset Way improvement project contained in the summary of the final design concept.
Council President?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Council discussion? Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I think that when this project is complete, whenever that may be, as Councilmember Joe said so well, it's going to be a significant change to one of our most traveled corridors and also, I think, a very beloved street in our, in our community. And so this is going to be significant. And so I want to, first of all, express appreciation for the thoroughness of the staff work and the presentation, as well as the community outreach. I think the outreach has been excellent and yielded a lot of very valuable information. You know, we use the concept of a sketch. And I've always liked, but I'm realizing that it's getting to be an old metaphor. But if you remember the old cameras back in the 50s, the Polaroids, and the pictures that would come out. And at first, the picture is very fuzzy. And then you lay it down for a while and you pick it up, and now it's very clear. So the design concept is when you're fuzzy and you don't have all the answers to everything. And you don't, you can't answer every question about how the roundabouts are going to look or what the safety measures will be and so forth. Because you can't really review and assess those until you've got the design concept. And so this is really important tonight because now we have the design concept. We can approve this and we can go forward. And then we start to get the answers to a lot of those other questions that the community had. I really appreciate the clear explanation of how you incorporated public input into this design concept. There's been a lot of iterations and there's been a lot of changes based completely on the input from the neighborhoods and sometimes from the school district as well. And expressing the concerns about young people. And I think we, we will be very, very conscious of the fact that this street goes by Issaquah Valley Elementary. So I want to commend the staff for really listening. You can see it throughout the whole concept that you listened to what people in the community had to say. And not only listen, but you incorporated it into the design concept. So I'm very appreciative of that. So I will support approving this design concept tonight. I'm looking forward to, I loved John's enthusiasm about designing the safety standards. Looking very much forward to the next round when we, when we learn more and we have more information. So, but thank you so much for a very thorough job to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Council President Hall, followed by Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I want to echo first and foremost, a big thank you to our staff. Great memo, great community engagement. I remember at one point during preparing for the committee meeting, I think I referenced this at the committee meeting, I was going through to see where this aligned with the Mobility Master Plan, with our different plans. And then I found it at the back of the memo, 12 pages of how it aligns with the plan. So very thorough work indeed. Thank you very much. I'm just going to reiterate some of the comments that I had at committee in line with our role as a city council. Some of the things that I were looking for was first and foremost that we have a merged design concept that brings resolution to the conflict. From, it's the 2011 design and then the CIP design, right? Those are the two that run conflict. Alignment with our plans and standards, like the Mobility Master Plan and the ICAP, responsive to community needs and feedback. And a design that supports our multimodal vision for Newport Way Northwest while also balancing roadway improvements for drivers and supporting safety improvements along it. There's also a pretty good cost savings associated with this right now. Hopefully, that will improve into the future, too. So in terms of what I was looking for in my role as a council member, it checks all the boxes. Thank you very much again, and I'll be voting in favor tonight.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I also will be voting in favor tonight. Two things that struck me. I travel this road pretty much every day. And about once a week, I see a mother with her child or a jogger crossing where there isn't a crosswalk. And it's not their fault. I mean, there, there isn't a crosswalk from, you know, from Sunset until you get to the school with their jerry-rigged crosswalk light there. And so, you know, the mother's just trying to get the kids to school. The bicyclist is watching out for their own safety as much as they can. But I think the, the safety improvements that can result from roundabouts that are carefully designed and thoughtfully put forward is going to help get those kids to school without having to cross- put forward is going to help get those kids to school without having to cross where they shouldn't be along the way, and that was one of the prime things that, that encouraged me to approve or move forward with this design. Also, I'd like to thank the administration. This design budget is $3.3 million. The city's received just over $3 million in federal design funds. There's a slight match that, that comes with about half of it, 1.8 million. We have to match 13.5%. So our part is about two, you know, quarter of a million dollars, and then the other 1.2 doesn't need a match. So we're putting in a quarter of a million dollars, we're potentially getting 3.3 million in design, and so I just want to thank the administration for continuing to look for these opportunities and showing, you know, the great concepts that we have that rank so high in the scoring because they've been well-designed by our engineering staff, our transportation staff, and the administration all the way through the process. So thank you.
Councilmember Mertz, followed by Councilmember Hunt?
Quick question and then comments. Sorry, I should have, I realized I had a question that I didn't get in the question section. Do we have any anticipated challenges with right-of-way with having a 68-foot main drag?
One of the reasons why we went with the reduced footprint, where we went from the 2018 concept to this one, was to reduce our impacts to right-of-way. There'll still be right-of-way needs, especially at the roundabouts, but it, it's now something that's manageable, where we'll be able to, whether it's through grants or traffic impact fees, be able to acquire that right-of-way.
Great. Okay. So I will be supporting this this evening. You know, when, when we first started talking about having roundabouts at Holly and, and the other streets, my kids were at IVE a few, few years ago. And it, it, parents were very, very excited. So I, I don't know exactly where things are in recent years with engagement with that school, but I know that anybody who's trying to take a left onto Newport, many, many, many times of the day would appreciate having a roundabout there. So I'm excited about this, and it's been a very, very long time coming. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Yes, great job incorporating community, community feedback and feedback from the business community as well as from residents and working with the school district. I, I will also be supportive. The school, the questions, especially that Council President Walsh was asking about that side road, I do think that's important to follow up on. My kids currently go to Essequa Valley Elementary, and the pattern, I think, if you were to talk to the school district, is a lot of people are going to make that loop at, at a very, around the bell time of the school, and so they're going to be coming out of that side street, a lot of cars in a very short period of time, twice a day, and I think that would be important to take into consideration, and that's not one of the locations of the roundabout. There's more distributed traffic, I would think, at the, at the Holly Roundabout, because that's, parents can go in and out of the school other hours of the day for after-school programs and, and what have you. So I think that that should be taken into consideration. It'd be great also from the perspective of the protected bike lanes to make sure that the bikes are also protected where you don't have a roundabout, but you do have cars going into the street, from the side streets, which is that school, school street, which I'm not sure what the name is, but that's, that would be one of those streets, and I imagine there would be other streets. I, I also think the experience of the bikes going through the roundabouts is super important because it will be a protected bike lane, it will be part of the Mount Sisoun Greenway, it will be a lot more, I think, attractive to bike riders to go through this corridor with these improvements, and I think the protected bike lane is great and is a big improvement. But then having those three roundabouts that needs to continue to be protected and continue to feel, feel and be safe for those bike riders as well. And then lastly, it's been touched upon, but the school crossing elements, where those crosswalks go, that will also end up being, I think, very important and very important for the experience of parents taking their kids to school and, and kids getting to and from school. So it's a lot going on in this short stretch, relatively short stretch, and I think the design so far does incorporate that, some additional considerations for your, as you continue to work on this. And lastly, when this work does take place, communication to the neighbor, the community, the neighbors, parents, staff, everybody who's using this corridor will be super important because it is one of our busiest corridors, and I imagine there will be detours, and that's, that's necessary for improvement. But at the same time, that communication about how to get to where you need to go during that period of time where it is being improved will be really important to get right, so would emphasize that for when the time comes. Will be supportive. Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. I'm also going to support this. I think most of my comments have already been made by my colleagues up here, but I just wanted to throw my appreciation in for the community engagement, the fact that this project has developed over time based on that community engagement. I look forward to continued engagement with the school district to talk about some of the things on exiting and entering and crossing and safe, safety on that. I really appreciated seeing this iteration with the separated bike lanes and walkways. It really goes to show that we are using the information from our master mobility plan to inform the design concept here, and I also very much appreciate the grant funding that has been coming together for this project. I think that's just a great start to this next step, and I look forward to seeing the next layers of design.
Any other comments? I think we've heard from everybody. So I will read the motion again. It has been moved and seconded to approve the corridor concept for the Newport Way Northwest Maple Street to West Sunset Way Improvement Project contained in the summary of the final design concept. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, 6-0. Well, John and Shua, that was a great presentation. Thank you very much, and also really agree with what the council said about how much of your work you get done through funding from others, which is hugely helpful in a project of this size. And hopefully, as we progress, some of that federal infrastructure money may be coming to our state and coming our way to help us actually get this project underway. So thanks for everything you did tonight. Council, we have a couple more items, Good of the Order and Executive Session. I'm going to recommend maybe we go through the Good of the Order, head into Executive Session, and then take a five-minute recess, if that makes sense. Okay. Good of the Order, Council President?
Thank you. Okay. I just wanted to take a moment to talk about the Essequa Business Leadership Forum and the amazing job that, first of all, our staff did and the amazing feedback that we got from the business community. So as Mayor Pauli said, there were about 30 business leaders that were there, and the event was really billed both as a opportunity to network in person and then also an opportunity for business leaders to give their feedback on what the city is doing and how it impacts their businesses. So we ended up with, I think, about five kind of breakout groups that were talking over their individual business needs, and so I just wanted to convey, first of all, there's a lot of attention and interest in our changes to Title 18 and permitting. We heard from several businesses that had potential projects to expand their businesses prior to COVID that decided not to because they just couldn't handle getting through the permitting process. And so there was a lot of interest in streamlining the processing and the changes that we were making to Title 18. There was also a lot of interest in businesses wanting to be involved in testing the code. So the test phase for Title 18 is coming up. There's a really short, like, three-day window to sign up, so businesses asked for that to be expanded, and so I think we're going to have a conversation with Director Dollywall about that because we would love to have them involved in the code testing. There was also a lot of conversation about workforce hiring, retention. A lot of them talked about just continued challenges to hiring and retaining employees. They would often have an employee start for a month and then leave, and they'd have to work on rehiring. We did, they identified the cost of housing and difficult commutes as really big impacts on their ability to hire for the city. They really talked to the city about Essequa Hobart Road, said that was really important to them. They appreciated the kind of work on Highway 18 and our influence there, but didn't feel like that was going to be as important to them as Essequa Hobart Road. And then one of the businesses shared a creative way that they're handling the cost of housing by providing 25 RV hookups for their employees to be able to stay on, and that that was one of the only ways that they could get enough employees just to maintain their business, let alone try and grow it. Again, they would like to grow their business but are held back by those things. We had a robust conversation about WashDOT and not taking care of their property on the freeway on and off ramps and how that's impacting businesses, both in people feeling like they're coming to a safe place and a place that's well-taken care of, as well as panhandlers and other people that are living in those properties and other ability to just take care of that. They wanted the city to take care of it, and the mayor had a really frank, I think, conversation saying, hey, we're not being paid for that. That's not our property. But I appreciated the willingness to say, hey, we would pilot a program. If you want to give us the revenue for that for a long-term project, we are absolutely open. So one of the things they did was encourage businesses to advocate for the city with state representatives, because while we would love to, you know, have some sort of inter-local agreement that would give us an opportunity to bring that up to effective service levels without the funding, that's just a, you know, unfunded mandate. We also had lots of conversations about return to office, what businesses are doing to try and get people to come in and really take advantage of the feeling of Essequa, and then also how businesses can engage with volunteer boards and commissions. So this was a wonderful event. I think one of the things that the mayor did really well was at the end of it say, hey, this is just a first step, this is us hearing from you, the next step is for us to be able to take that into each of these projects, each of the stages, and make sure that that feedback comes, comes back to the businesses on what we've heard. But it was just, it was a really great event and opportunity to just hear very directly and frankly from the business community about what was important to them and in this particular stage. So I look forward to that being continued for future years.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great summary.
And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy, but it was mostly just a summary of what happened.
Thank you for that, Council President. Anyone else have items for Good of the Order? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I spoke to a representative from the Village Theater this afternoon, and October 14 at 5:00 PM, it's a Friday afternoon, there'll be an unveiling of the Hunt Family Theater at the first stage. You can view it from Vino Bella on that side of the road, and there'll be a reception at Vino Bella after the event. So if you can make it, I think the Hunt family would appreciate that, and Village Theater would appreciate our support. Lastly, AWC holds something called Cities on Tap, and there are various events for elected officials, Ridgefield, Wenatchee, Port Orchard, Spokane, and finally, there's one in Everett that's the closest one to, to us. I'll be attending the one in Everett as part of my job. If others would like to attend, we could see if we can carpool up there or what have you. But it's a great opportunity to meet other elected officials under an AWC event banner, so I just thought I'd pass that on.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Any other Good of the Order? I have a few meeting notices to do, that's it. Okay, September 28, the Committee of the Whole Meeting. The anticipated agenda items include regional representation and the 2023-24 budget overview. October 3 is our regular city council meeting, and the anticipated agenda items are amending Chapter 9.40 of the IMC, Essequa Municipal Code, RE, criminalizing vehicle trespass and making or possessing of motor vehicle theft tools. Also, potentially public hearings on the 2023-24 budget and levy and revenue sources. So the last item we have on business this evening is the executive session, and as earlier announced, there'll be an executive session held this evening to discuss security of computer and telecommunications networks per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1AII, and pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NII. These items are expected to take a total of 45 minutes, and no action is anticipated in open session. As a reminder, executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will now recess into our executive session at 9:05 PM. For anyone participating virtually who is not a part of the closed session, you can remain in the main meeting, and you're welcome to stay until we reconvene. Clerk, are we ready to proceed?
Yes.